Who's giving you the thumbs up?
What was her?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting until I have six on the news on my personal watch.
You're good to go whatever it's not.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deep and justness for all. Thank you. This is the Oregon Board of Education organizational meeting on January 10. Mrs. Bruce, would you give us the roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Cathers.
Here, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes, I'm sorry. My hearing needs both just.
Pause.
Okay, and Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Do you need a minute, Dan?
I think we're functioning.
Wonderful.
No, no, it's fine.
Can I have a motion to approve the, adopt the agenda as written? Second?
Second.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cathers? Yes. At this time, we're going to do the election of the officers. Board members, there are some notes about the procedure. If you need a refresher, you can read those on your agenda. And so at this point, I will open it up for nominations for president for 2023.
Make a motion. Mrs. Mular, again, this here, please.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Do you want to vote?
Yes, let's do it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
I abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
We will now proceed with the election of the Vice President for 2023, and we will at this time take nominations.
I will nominate Mr. Shea.
We have sound of two nominations.
Okay.
I heard Dan nominate Mr. Shea.
That's correct.
And Jeff nominated Mrs. Cathers, myself. Mrs. Cathers. All right.
Do we do a vote on each or?
I'll say.
A second, I am not sure.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Shea.
Okay. Now, roll call. Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
No.
And Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Shea, are you going to abstain? Okay, so, Mrs. Mular and Mr. Shea, congratulations on your appointments. We look forward to you serving us. And at this point, I will turn it over to Mrs. Mular to run the rest of the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Cathers. We go, first of all, to review the board's ethical policy. And you should have that in front of you from your packet. While serving as a member of my Board of Education, I accept the responsibility to improve public education. Mr. Saviski, would you read the first one? To that end, I will.
Remember, my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending public schools.
Mrs. Cathers? Obey the laws of Ohio and the United States.
Respect the confidentiality of privileged information.
Recognize that as an individual board member, I have no authority to speak or act for the board.
Work with other members to establish effective board policies.
Delegate authority for the administration of the school to the superintendent and staff.
Encourage ongoing communications among board members, the board, students, staff, and the community.
Render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups.
Make efforts to attend all board meetings.
Become informed concerning the issues to be considered at each meeting.
Improve my boardsmanship by studying educational issues by participating in in-service programs.
Support the employment of staff members based on qualifications and not as a result of influence.
Cooperate with other board members and administrators to establish a system of regular and impartial evaluations of all staff.
Avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof.
Refrain from using my board position for benefit of myself, family members, or business associates, and.
Express my personal opinion, but once the board has acted, accept the well of the majority.
Thank you, everyone. We need a motion to adopt a resolution, the continuation of the board's service fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Item C. Legal counsel appointment is recommended that we continue using the following legal counsel. Spangler and Nathanson, Ginsmore and Shoal LLC, Ricker and Eckler, Walter Heverfield, and Weston Hurd. Weston Hurd is added because our Eric, that we normally use his move to that group, but we may also use Walter Hevers for something else. So I need a motion, please.
So moved. A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call. Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Appointment of standing committees and liaisons. Finance, Mr. Saviski, please, and Mr. Savick. Capital improvement, Mr. Shea and myself. Policy and personnel, myself and Mrs. Cathers. Academic, Mr. Savick and Mrs. Cathers. Legislative liaison, Mr. Shea. Student achievement, Mr. Savick. Okay, and then we need to set the time and date for regular meetings. Any discussion from the board, or shall we agree to keep the 13th Tuesday at 6:00?
It's good with me.
Yep. Okay. We need a motion.
So moved.
Oh, to close?
Second.
Well, no. Are you asking about a motion for the regular meetings?
No, you don't need those.
That's why I wasn't sure if we need a motion for that.
Yeah, no, you don't. Closing motion. Okay. So who was that? I'm sorry. Thank you, my man. Second? Second. All right, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Okay, we will move right into the regular board meeting. If you don't mind, let's take a moment of silence. We already did the pledge, but the moment of silence for Eleanor Ferguson. She was a full-time sub and a teacher at Star. Rose Booth-Motter, who was a Coy teacher and an Eisenhower teacher, and Doris Cooman, who was a bus driver. So let's just take a moment and remember them. Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Strickland.
Hey, Mrs. Cathers, here. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mrs. Mular, could we move item B1 out of the consent agenda? B1 and vote on it separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call. Okay, excuse me. Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Okay. Is she correctly? I think you're next.
So we don't have any public participation, so maybe just with the recognition, is that where we're at?
Absolutely.
All right. So again, I don't know, Kylinzi, this is your first, first full year now that, that we're done with that, so each year, we like to certainly, I guess, thank you publicly as board members and, and recognize the number of years of service that, that our board has put in. We've got a clearly veteran board with, you know, a little bit of new, but, but Dan's been around now, it's three years, going into four and combined, and Jeff still leads the way with 15 years, and Mike with 11, and Carol 13. So I just want to, certainly from my point of view, I've worked with all of you for, many of you for a long, long time. Been through a lot of different stages of this district in terms of progress and, and, you know, ups and downs and the COVID thing and everything, and I just want to thank you. It's not an easy job. You guys know it, I know it, but it can be a rewarding, I think, position, and, and is a lot of the time. So again, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure Jane as well, I, you know, thank you, congratulations, and, and we appreciate you. And there is a kind of a sign sent. You have a certificate in front of you as well that comes from the House School Board Association thanking you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland.
Thank you.
Okay, Treasures Report.
All right. Okay, there will be no need for an updated permanent appropriation measure. Just I'll tell you that, let you know that up front. The reports were sent through the Google Doc, and I think I said this last month, but I keep repeating this, but with the true cash review, our revenues, revenues are up about 4% compared to last year. That's really not, it, it's, it's a little skewed because we didn't start getting the new state funding formula until January, so that's going to switch around a bit. And our forecast is about that we're going to have a slight decrease from last year's revenues. Our expenses are tracking as expected. I don't want to steal the thunder from our legislative committee, but I did get a notice from our bond council that with the passage of House Bill 458, there are only going to be two annual elections in Ohio. You guys probably don't know this. We, 2016, there were four, and then it went down to three. So we're at two. It will be May and November during presidential years. It's in March. There is an exception, which I hope we never get to, that if we're here in a state of fiscal emergency, we have to be declared that by the Auditor of State, then you can have an August election. But that's not something we want to discuss, and this is not because we need an operating levy. This is just informational. I just want you to be aware of it for this, and maybe look to in the future, whenever. I just want a quick update on the state and federal monies. I just want you aware, you know, we have been, we're fiscally very sound, but we have received quite a bit of COVID money that has been enabled us to stretch our general fund. I just wanted you to see a recap as a total. We've got almost, we've received almost $6.5 million in federal and state allocations. We spent $4.2 million as of December 31, 2022, and we still have over $2 million remaining. This has been great help to us with many of the extra stuff that hit us with COVID, but I do want you to be aware that, yeah, we got, we've been fortunate. The last thing I have, unless there are questions, is our audit is completed, and so far as I know, we're receiving a clean report. That's what they said to us, but till AOS, Auditor of State speaks, we, we won't know for sure. So unless there are questions, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Bruce. May I have a motion to accept the Treasures Report?
So moved, like the last item C, which wasn't required.
Sorry.
Discussion?
Sorry, Dan missed what Jeff said, which was, you were, last item C, which wasn't?
Yeah, not.
I'm sorry.
So we had a motion, we had a second.
Do you have a motion? Roll call. Okay. Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Item H, an executive session. Is there anyone who feels the need for an executive session? Nope. Okay, thank you. Onto the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull? We already pulled item B1. So that will not be included in this motion. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Okay, I heard Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Okay, a separate vote on item B1. Item B1 is the employment of Mr. Joseph Kiss III as Clay High School Athletic Director, a two-year contract and a salary of $87,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, just one quick thing, just with Joe sitting out here, I know how nodding, but just want to take one good example of homegrown talent. Guy staying, you know, true to his home, to his roots, and the question I have for you after the, I want to know if you are the youngest athletic director at what level? What, are you 16? I mean, somewhere around there? I mean, seriously, I do want to know if you're, you know, just a quick little survey, see if you, you know, what's the youngest? If you are the youngest, it'd just be neat to know.
In, in our conference?
Yeah, and anybody else you reach out to that you know, that, you know, in different leagues and stuff like that.
Definitely the youngest that I'm aware of.
Yeah, because, well, thanks, and you know, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Saviski, you know, it's too bad when you know him and his father and his, went to school with his grandfather, so he really is homegrown. Okay, further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cathers?
No. Okay, motion carried. Moving on to new business. Board-approved training. We need a motion to approve the attendance of interested board members at the workshops presented by OSBA from January through November. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Item D, Ohio Educational Policy Institute. We need a motion to renew our membership in the amount of $1,500. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Item C, Ohio High School Athletic Association. We need a motion to approve participation in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for grades one through, I'm sorry, grade seven through 12. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Item D, disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of seven televisions that were at Cardinal Stretch but purchased through auxiliary funds. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Item E, we need to adopt the calendar for 24-25 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
No.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Item F, donation. We need a motion to accept a donation from Meyer of $1,000 to Star Elementary. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Thanks.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Real quick, before that vote, that, it's not on here, but Mr. Saviski, through his, his position at Mercy, they donated gloves and hats just, just a day or two ago to, to me, and I just wanted, it's not on here, but I wanted to acknowledge that, and those were delivered to Star Elementary. Just, he did not know that, but they were so thankful because of how cold it is at, just at recess, and how kids forget gloves and hats every single day. So, so thank you for that donation on behalf of Mercy. It's not on here, but.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call. Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mular?
Yes. Item G, a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. The list was provided to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Congratulations.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is this for June? It just seems odd.
It is odd, and it, Mr. Strickland and I talked about it, and Mrs. Cathers had the same question, and it's, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a young man that moved in and was short of credits from another district, only needed two and a half, didn't complete those credits in time, didn't apply for that graduation ceremony that would have happened prior to, but he has a job promotion on the line if he has his high school diploma. I'm, I'm sharing that correctly, so I guess we felt to bring it to the board to go ahead and approve that. He's met all the requirements for graduation that we don't hold him up from that promotion.
So it's not a separate ceremony?
It's not going to be a separate ceremony. He'll be, will be considered a December grad?
No.
No, but just, he won't, will you?
He'll just receive his diploma. Back in the day, we only awarded diplomas once. When we started the OBA and the possibility of students working ahead and.
He was an OBA student, too.
That's when we started our semester graduation, as well as our end-of-the-year graduation. And then we also have the opportunity for students in this situation, traditionally, to earn their diploma at the end of the quarter. But since, like Mr. Gregory said, that this job opportunity is on the line, we did not want to hold him up.
So is he eligible to walk if he wants in?
Once he gets that diploma, that's, that's, he is done.
That's fine, okay. And he, apparently, he's probably worried about.
He is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Saviski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mular?
Yes.
Item H, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the December 28th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with the board policy. Your turn, Mr. Gregory.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Mular. Well, I just want to start with, you know, Joe's in the back, and we were, we were kind of joking, but congratulations, Joe. Very excited to bring you onboard. I know it's been a bull of years for, as long as I've known you, and, and you certainly put yourself in a, in a good position, and I know I'm very proud and excited about what the future holds. So we're glad you're here tonight, and if you wouldn't mind taking a quick second, maybe introducing who's with you tonight? And if anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to say just a couple of things if you'd like.
Yeah.
But at least introduce who's with you. That's the, that's the main thing.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you, you can go back there. It's fine.
I have my, my mother, my Jennifer Sierra, my friend, my colleague, Ash is there as well. Appreciate them coming out for the support as well. Mr. Gregory, we'd like to thank you and my hearing committee for the recommendation. Board of Education, thank you for your support. Mr. Gregory's been, been a bull of mine for a very long time, since I was probably seen in high school. Worked very hard, kind of dedicated a lot of hours to play high school, and would like to continue to do that, obviously, so. Appreciate the support and the opportunity to continue to serve our students and families out here in my own district, so thank you.
Great. Congratulations, Joe. And I'll always remember how old Joe is, because he's the exact same date, birthday, and everything as my son, so kind of a neat little connection that I feel with Joe, so. My report, I just got a couple of things. On there, personnel update, you know, it's January. We actually started and hired a teacher tonight. Thank you. Coy Elementary teacher Erin, Erin Jerky was her maiden name, or she's now married. I don't even know how to pronounce her last name officially, but very excited. She is moving back to this area from Columbus area. She was with us and did a phenomenal job, so the committee recommended her out of Coy, so very excited to have her back and, and a part of this. But there's going to be a lot more coming, but with the shortage of teachers and, and we want to get a jump start, so you're going to start to see more of this. Like, probably each month, we'll have a name for you going into spring. And so we have between 11 and 13 that we believe or know about right now that have either resigned or we know are going to resign based on everything they've said. So we'll see if all that happens, but high school, I think, has six, and then there's a couple at each building. And there's a few that may move out of state due to family things. We're not sure. Those are some of the wild cards. I just wanted to let you know when you start to see them a little earlier than normal. Normally, this is a March-to-May process. to May process, and it, it needs to start sooner, because these kids are getting recruited the second, they start second semester or their first semester in college, and every superintendent I know and every human resources director is calling universities like now, as soon as they know of something to, to get, get a name or a resume or something like that, so we're going to be on that as best we can. I want to invite any of you that are available, if you would like to be a part of this, the book vending machines that we have, we've set a date and a time for the ribbon cutting, so it's going to be kind of an informal thing, but we're going to invite representatives from Toledo Refining Company, and we're going to start at Coy on the 24th at 9:30, so, like, if there's one you could come to that I know probably everyone will be at from like TRC to even 9:30 at Coy, then we're going to go to Star, and then, I don't know how long each will last, maybe 15 minutes, I can't imagine real long, but we're doing that just to, I guess officially thank Toledo Refining Company for that donation, and also to highlight, highlight the book vending machines, so you're certainly welcome to come, I already know this too, but one of the big reasons that Friday there's no school is, is Clay hosts one of the largest wrestling tournaments along, that are in the area, with 57 teams coming, it's an absolute monster of a tournament. We, we tend to do very, very well financially from this tournament, and it's a well-run tournament, and one of the, one of the, I guess, highly regarded tournaments from my understanding, and so that's going on all of this upcoming weekend, and our culinary arts has become a big part of that by providing the hos, the food for the hospitality, which has been, I mean, what, what I'm being told, the talk of the town in terms of the, those that come, because we all know how fantastic their food is and how Chef Andy and her students do, so just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's this weekend, if you have a chance to, to swing by, and was very excited to hear how well the junior high tournament did last weekend, called the Barton, they had record, for, for that tournament, record profits, like, a lot of people showed up, well-run tournament, and so I know Andreas Folito was very excited, and Emily was a big part of that, who's our new assistant athletic director down there, so very, very proud of those folks, because those are a couple of the biggest venues we have, where people come into our facilities from outside schools, where you can bat many teams, I'm not sure how many are at the Barton, it's nowhere near what the high school is, but it's, it's a lot. Frost Fest, not sure if you heard when that is, but you are certainly invited to take part in that fundraiser, our annual dinner fundraiser for the Oregon Schools Foundation, that is Saturday, February 11th at 6:00, so you can go online and buy tickets either individually, or I know some folks have gone with their, their work who's bought a table, so I'll be there, and it's a, it's a great event. A little bit different theme this year, a Monopoly theme, so you can buy a, a Monopoly board piece as part of your, you know, your donation if you choose, and again, just, just again, to reiterate, thank the Board of Education for being a Board of Education, it's, you know, I talk, I, I talk to my colleagues, you know, one of the big topics that, you know, we talk about is how things are going and working within your districts, and, you know, everybody has ups and downs, and we all get frustrated at times, but we also, also feel a sense of accomplishment at times, and I want to thank again the Board for, for sticking with it, and to continue to, to work to get better, as we all do every day, and, you know, congratulations, enjoy your special month, whatever that means, but, you know, the community doesn't realize until you're on it what it is, and, and what it entails, and how much information comes into you from all angles, so again, thank you for that. That's my report, listeners, questions on any other topic I didn't cover?
Which logo won from the presentation?
Oh, that's a good question, I'll have to ask Mr. Kiss, I'm not sure, was it the big one?
I'm here with Mr. O'Connell, and send, he should do an email which one it was.
It, it just hit me, because it was the memory of the last time we were in this room, that I didn't know what the result was.
I'm thinking the lead one was the bigger one, the kind of the.
No, I believe, I believe that one is the one that won, but I don't want to miss.
That's fine.
Not, not critical, just curious.
Just something.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Gregory? Under old business, the following policies were presented for their first reading in December and are now being recommended for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt, please? So move. Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Sabin?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulr?
Yes.
Item 13, as board committee reports, but since there were no many meetings, we won't have any reports. Board discussion, I may add to some of your things, Mr. Gregory, we have a powerlifting tournament coming on the 21st.
So they'll just add on that one, that one has, it's the Nate Publican Club raising the bar, 11 teams and over 200 lifters will be coming to lift that day.
So that's a big one, really?
Saturday, Jan, January 21st, attending.
From 8 to 6?
Yep, yeah, it's a long day.
Okay.
And a very smelly gym, probably just like the last week once.
Just like wrestling, yeah. Jerusalem's having an art contest, Star has a book fair, Eisenhower goes to Camp Matindo January 30th to February 3rd, USA has a regional championship on 13th, EFA has a public speaking contest on January 20th, no school January 13th or 16th, and hockey, boys and girls, basketball and swimming and gymnastics are all in full swing, so. The other thing is, community, for the community, it's Girl Scout cooking month, so if you know a Girl Scout, you might want to. Okay.
Have to break your resolution already.
Yes, right, well, they don't come in right away, so you just order.
They're just preparing to break it.
Right, at some point. Board discussion, I would like to propose that we have a monthly work session, just to discuss items, not to do any voting or anything on any resolutions, or any, make any motions, nothing like that, just a work session where we can sit down and discuss things, it seems that some things are falling through the cracks, Mrs. Cathers knows something, Mr. Zavisky doesn't, Mr. Shea, and, and, you know, some people know something, and we need to improve our communication, so I propose that we would have a monthly meeting, start with a monthly meeting, and maybe eventually do a bimonthly, the administration would be there, we can ask questions and get those things out of the way right away, it could even be a luncheon, if you, because two people work yet, we might be able to do it at lunchtime, we could have people there and the rest of us zoom in, but I would like to see a monthly work session, it's not a regular board meeting, but a work session. Do I have any other comments, maybe?
It's not a, you know, it's not a regular board meeting, it is a board meeting.
Correct.
With discussion only, but no voting.
The structure would not be the same as what we did tonight.
It's called a work session.
Yeah, more of a work session, where the only, again, I don't, we can structure the agenda any way we want, but in my mind, if we do this, it would be basically board discussion, and we could list items if we wanted, it's a public meeting, we can have it here, or we can have it in the other building, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's a more intimate way to have conversation, it's an open meeting, people there, we could go into executive session if needed, if something came up that was appropriate, but I appreciate that, I, I think it will benefit everyone if we could at least try it, so it certainly has my support, to give a shot, and, and I don't know when that would occur, I guess if we do the third Tuesday, which is what we've agreed on, the third Tuesday, maybe the first Tuesday, or the first week, where it's kind of splits the month, is kind of my thought.
I can tell you that the University of Toledo Board of Trustees does exactly that prior to each board meeting, and I think it's, from what I've heard, from the trustees, it really helps facilitate communication and understanding, it also makes the board meetings go very, very smoothly.
I'm in favor, I just, will be a logistical challenge, but I will try to limit that, so I'm in favor of the concept.
And even if it is a, if you had to call in or zoom in because you're on the road or something was happening?
There's no voting, so it's not.
I mean, it's allowable under, what I understand is meeting ethics, you know, so, so if we get that, then it's going to be tough, so the first Tuesday, maybe, I don't know, is that what, or, or do we set it at each, do we look at calendars at each meeting, we could do it that way, I don't know what works best for you guys.
If it's Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I will typically, if it's daytime, would always be a Zoom participant, so if that's okay, that's fine, Mondays and Fridays, and just.
It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be a new thing at all, from my point of view, I mean, it could be a 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock, same, same time here.
If it's Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, 6:00 PM or later is my only in-person option, so, which is fine, so just, if it matters to you all, I have more flexibility to do five, or even maybe a lunch hour.
It's fine.
Mondays and Fridays, so whatever your preference is.
Mr. Zavisky?
Now, I mean, my calendar's all overboard, so it's just a matter of, if we set it, I can add it, and then schedule it out there.
Do you have any preference at all?
Like, evening, would evening be better, or?
I mean, there's sometimes, I mean, it's, it's hit a mess, if, you know, like a new one would work or not.
Why don't we set, why don't, why don't we set like the 7th, which is February, is that first Tuesday, and do an evening one, just so we can all be, at least be at the first one, and, and Mr. Shea, we'll, we'll zoom you in if you're available, and you'll be, you know, be seen and heard. February 7th, and do, I don't know, we could, any, anytime, so 5:00, if you think would work, or wait till 5:30, 6:00, just keep it at 6:00 and not have to think about it?
It's a Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
It's never set on.
Here, here's the only thing, it's, I, I don't want these meetings to go on forever and ever and ever, and I'm not suggesting that we have the meetings go on and just pontificate, pontificate, but I do want some legitimate discussion, and if it, so, so if we, it's, in your minds, keep it in your head, maybe an hour and a half or something like that in our heads, you know, if it's an hour, great, if it's a half hour, great, so starting at 6:00 does, does take us a little bit later, if we start at 5:30, we're out by 7:00.
Are we going to try to?
Have topics?
Set an agenda?
Yes.
So that?
Yes.
We know the topic, we want to touch on that day, and we can limit that.
Yeah, there's no way you can do more than two.
If we just shoot from the hip, we're going to not have a.
We'll have it highly organized.
We'll be there for a lot of hours.
Nope, we'll have it organized, I promise.
And if anybody has something they want to discuss, send it to Mr. Gregory, so he pleases on the.
I've got a list of 20 things right now, but they, they got to be prioritized based on what's coming up next and where we're at as, as a board, so, we'll, we'll get that out ahead of time, you'll know what the topics are.
So how about a time, what works for?
I can, I might be able to be here by 5:30, I could also call in for the first five minutes if I have something.
Is Monday better for you?
Yeah, it could be a Monday.
I don't know, Monday would be better for me.
I can do earlier Monday, it's easier.
Okay, I just want Tuesday.
Because we work, we work from home on Mondays, and that might work better for her.
Monday always has a.
Mondays?
Monday, Monday always has.
Has the boosters.
Every, every Monday, there's a booster meeting.
There's always a booster meeting.
That's true, but those are at 7:00, about right.